Good evening, everyone. I am Councilman Richard Starr, the Councilman for War Five, right here where Jerry Sue Thornton Center is located at. And today, we are coming together to hear firsthand from St. Vincent's St. Charity regarding some of the announcements that we recently heard about the hospital potentially closing, which has been reported. And we wanted to hear firsthand from representatives from St. Vincent's St. Charity to discuss these things, but we also want to make sure I give some ground rules and housekeeping. If it's anything council-related, please save it for after the meeting. So if it's garbage collection, yards haven't been cleaned, we can take care of that after this meeting, but not during the meeting. The primary focus for this meeting is to understand what is happening with the entire neighborhood as it revolves around East 22nd Street, St. Vincent's St. Charity, what their plans are going forward, and what we can do as a community to figure out some solutions to some of the problems that we have. I do have a couple of different guests here to speak on behalf of Cleveland City Council. I definitely want to bring up our Council President. I voted for him as well, to discuss some of the things that we've been doing with councils. The minute that I found out and got word of the announcement of what was going on with St. Vincent's Charity, I immediately reached out to Council President. And since then, we've been coordinating, meeting, discussing, conversing, emailing, calling, just to figure out what can actually be done and how we can stand frontline with the residents as well as the employees to figure out solutions to this problem that we all could see as a major concern. None other, I would like to bring up Council President Blaine Griffin, so he can give some words, and we get more forward into the meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate it. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilman Starr for pulling this meeting together. I want to just say this. I've been through this before with St. Luke's Hospitals. We've been through this with a couple of other hospitals. I want to commend Councilman Starr, who really just basically came and jumped right in and said, "We got to do something for this hospital," for several reasons. Not just because of the direct impact that it has in the area, but what the impact it has in the community. In the community, this hospital is vital, is a vital anchor to the development and to the stability of this neighborhood. It's critical. It is a major anchor. I know the Councilman would tell you he has grand plans that he's helped develop in order to make sure that we do something to connect this area to the downtown footprint that we haven't seen in years. And he's been the leader in doing that, and this hospital plays a critical role in that. Number two, we know that mental health services are what you do. This is the strength. Rosary Hall and some of these other institutions are critical to providing mental health services in the community and addiction services. So we want to make sure that we can figure out what we work with you on, and how, I know Scott Osieke is here, how we can work with the county and other entities to make sure that we lobby the state and that we become partners to figure out what we need to do in order to try to make sure that we provide a vital service for our community. We know that the state moved the mental health hospital way out into Richfield County or Richfield Township several years ago. And since then, we've seen an uptick in just mental health episodes, and we think that St. Vincent's Hospital can play a major role in that. We know that you're losing acute care. I tell everyone, I take it personally. This hospital actually saved my mother's life when my mother had an episode on East 78th and Union, and I found her nearly dead. I took her to St. Vincent's Hospital, the ambulance did, and they doctored on her, and they brought her back to life. Now she's vibrant, 73 years old, married, and doing well. So this hospital does mean a lot to a lot of people. There's a lot of sentimental value. This hospital's been helping people since the Civil War. So we don't take it lightly when they close. And I always tell everyone, never get mad at a man or woman for who they're there to represent. And this gentleman is here to represent the folks in this community. So after we get through with the raw emotions that this hospital downsizing has, we need to pivot to what do we do next? And I want to make sure that this council is going to get behind Richard Starr and work closely with the mayor's office and the county in order to make sure that we find solutions to make this campus viable to this region. Last but not least, the workers. We always have to make sure that these low-wage workers that are nurses, that are phlebotomists, that are the folks that are on the frontline, that just got finished working through a pandemic, that we find a way to make sure that they're treated fairly, that they actually, that everyone adheres to their contract, but also that we look and we find deep in the wells of our heart to make sure that they're treated in a way of dignity and manner that they deserve. Whether that means getting them placed in other good-paying wage jobs, similar to where they're believing, or whether that means making sure that as some of them plan on retiring or some of them plan on separating, that they're treated in a fair manner. So I know that there's agreements in place, but there's also what we know that the Sisters of Charity have done all throughout the time of this hospital is treat their workers in a humane and fair way. So we're here to advocate for the community, the workers, and for the built environment that we have at this area. And I will work closely with Councilman Starr to make sure that we show the commitment to the community. I want to say this in closing, and I say this in all sincerity, I want us to really get behind Richard Starr. We have somebody who I think has an enormous amount of potential. I think we have somebody who is going to be a leader on this, and we've given him one of the toughest challenges that any community has ever seen, when you have the potential of losing an anchor organization. So we all need to rally around Councilman Starr, make sure that he has the support and resources, and whatever he needs in order to try to make sure that he advocates on behalf of this community. I'd like to thank the hospital executives from the hospital side as well as the network side that came out today. I always tell you, as my good friend Tony Coyne would tell you, that sometimes people anticipate outrage, and what they find is a community that just cares and just wants to know what's going to happen with our future. And the future's going to be in good hands as long as we work closely with Richard Starr. We're going to be at the table as council, working hard for you. Thank you so much, and enjoy your evening. I apologize in advance, I have another commitment that I have to go take care of. Thank you.
Well, we're not going to be long. We can get straight to it. I'm a man of many little bit of words, but I definitely want to make sure we bring up, you know, the executives from St. Vincent's Charity. I believe Ms. Murphy is going to give us dialogue, a presentation to talk about some different things, and then we can go from there into a Q and A and dive deep into everything that we got going on. So Ms. Murphy, come on up.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Starr. Thank you, sir. Thank you, God bless you. Thank you. So really, thank you for being here, and again, thank you, Councilman Starr, for your welcoming St. Vincent's Charity here tonight, and in hosting this really important conversation. And we know, it is not an easy conversation. It is not, but we're honored to be here. And also, I want to thank Council President Griffin for being here and supporting the community. So I'm Jan Murphy, as you know, and I am the President and CEO of the Sisters of Charity Health System that has ministries in Cleveland, Canton, and in South Carolina. And we're an organization that is responsible for St. Vincent's Charity Medical Center. I just want to announce some people that are here with me tonight. So in attendance with me is Anthony Coyne. Anthony is a board chair for the St. Vincent's Charity Medical Center, and we thank you, Tony, for being here. Tony's an attorney in Cleveland, has been involved in many high-profile development projects, including Public Square. And Tony wanted to be here to listen, and we all want to hear what your concerns are. Also with me in the audience is Dr. Chuck Garvin. Dr. Garvin, who will be the Chief Medical Officer for our St. Vincent Ambulatory Care Services. We have Rashawn Bunton is right up front, Vice President of Community Engagement for the St. Vincent's Charity Health Campus and Managing Director of the Cleveland Central Promise Neighborhood. And then Heather Stoll is our Vice President of External Affairs for the Health System. So I want to thank them for being here. And thank you, everyone, for joining me in this conversation. And again, it is an important one that we have. As you know, the Sisters of Charity have been in the Central Neighborhood since 1865. And they literally came here from France at the request of the Bishop of Cleveland to really take care of the neighborhood. There's tremendous poverty, and they needed, you know, someone to come and take care. And so literally, the Sisters were actually the very first public health nurses in Cleveland. They went out into the community and took care of people. Again, this, the meeting, the emotional, spiritual needs, social and economic needs has been our constant and focus for the last 171 years the Sisters have been here. They've made many changes across that time, and they had addressed, as things changed, they had to make those adjustments. But they never, ever lost the focus of their mission, and that was to meet the needs of the poor and the unmet needs of people that were in their community. We are at a point in time in which it was necessary for all of us to be willing to manage through this incredible time of change. St. Vincent's Charity Medical Center has absorbed and paid for tremendous financial losses for some time. We've seen decreasing demand for inpatients, so when patients stay in a hospital, those volumes have continued to decrease, which means that they stay overnight in a bed. An increase in demand for outpatient care has really gone up, and we're seeing that all across the country. And we know that during COVID, you know, when people couldn't get into a hospital, and quite honestly, when we started to, you know, come out of the surges, people didn't want to come back. And so they were relying on outpatient and even telehealth. And I really do believe that that's here to stay, and that isn't a bad thing, but it is, it is a big change. More people today want to receive their health care in ways that help them stay out of the hospital, not be admitted. These changes were underway already. When the pandemic hit, COVID-19 made it even more difficult for us financially and magnified the challenges that we were facing. For these reasons, we have made the difficult decision to transition St. Vincent's from a traditional hospital, one where people stay overnight, to an ambulatory health services provider, which means we will serve people during the day for illness and injuries that do not require overnight care. And there's a lot of reasons around that, and we'll get into that. I want to share that the Sisters of Charity are totally devoted to the Central Neighborhood. They are never going to leave. The Sisters have made that commitment. We are here, and they will not leave. We have great plans for a future to supplement the health care that we will see on the ambulatory side, and you're going to hear more about that in terms of our vision for the health campus. And that really is looking at addressing the social determinants of health, really taking a look. And we saw this in COVID. We lived it, you know, for sure in Central. When we had to close St. Vincent's, nobody could come in. Well, you know, our neighbors, they eat at St. Vincent's. They eat in our cafeteria. They buy food. We couldn't let them in. So we had to really create, and the hospital did, a mission kitchen where they could prepare meals and take meals out. So we know food insecurity is a huge issue, and it's daunting, and we really have to figure that out. And so we believe that that is a part of the work of the health campus. After November 15th, St. Vincent's Charity is going to focus on three core areas. And I think you heard Councilwoman Griffin say that behavioral health is critically important, and we know it is throughout our country. We know coming out of COVID, that it has really put tremendous pressure on every age group and every part of our society. But we will have behavioral health, including mental health and addiction treatment through Rosary Hall and through the psychiatric emergency department. And I just want to call out that Rosary Hall was founded by Sister Ignatia Gavin. She actually founded it at St. Thomas and Akron and brought it up to St. Vincent's in 1952. And that is a hallmark program for those that struggle with alcohol addiction and drug addiction. And we know, that is a huge issue for us, and we will still continue to provide that loving care to those that suffer. We will have primary care, including family medicine, to provide preventative services such as immunizations and vaccines, which we did all through, obviously, the COVID epidemic. Annual exams to support the care of chronic illnesses such as diabetes, hypertension, and other health diagnoses. The primary care physician is vital in providing routine care that helps each individual lead a healthy life. And then we know that if we improve the environment around the social determinants of health, we really do meet the whole needs in a very holistic way, and that is critically important. Urgent care services will be provided. We believe that urgent care is the best option for individuals who require immediate medical attention. If you have a minor illness or injury that can't wait until tomorrow, urgent care is the way to go. And in fact, most patients that we see in our ED, and we've been tracking this, really do have urgent care issues rather than critical care. Some of the services over time at St. Vincent's, meaning cardiac intervention, was discontinued because there was not the volume. And candidly, we have other giants in the Cleveland area, Cleveland Clinic, UH Metro, that had those services and could adequately meet that need. So today, when we, when we really can't do an intervention at St. Vincent's, the patients are taken to the appropriate hospital. EMS takes them to the appropriate hospital. But again, we will remain providing urgent care. There's a flyer in the back of the room, I think there is a flyer in the back of the room, and it'll just show you all the continuing services and their location. All of these services described are currently being provided and will continue in the future. After November 15th, St. Vincent will no longer offer inpatient services, nor will we be able to operate the medical emergency department. Without inpatient beds, if you don't have overnight beds, you really cannot call yourself an emergency department because you would not be able to bring all those patients there with that level of acuity. But we will have the urgent care there. One of the greatest impacts that this decision will have is on our caregivers. And we do, and I call this out, I was the president of St. Vincent's during COVID, and I have such deep love for our employees and what they did, coming in every single day. You know, when COVID first hit, you might remember this, on March 17th, Governor DeWine, he demanded, actually it was a mandate, all hospitals had to stop immediately doing non-emergent urgent surgery. It had to be an emergency, or you couldn't do the surgery. And that morning, I remember, I went up to the operating rooms, and all the doctors, all the surgeons, all the nurses, the patients were in the rooms. They're all ready to start the surgical cases, and we had to stop immediately. Why we did that was, the governor was afraid that we would run out of personal protective equipment because COVID was going to have a number of surges, and that if we continued to do surgery at the pace that we were doing it, we would never have enough PPE. In that month, so we, on that day, we furloughed 315 of our caregivers because we were not going to be doing surgery. And in that one month, we lost $3 million. And so just to show you the significance or the impact of that, and you know, all the efforts to try and overcome that have been heroic, and I just want to call out our caregivers because they are absolutely amazing. We have, again, we will, consistent with our Catholic social teaching, we are doing our best to support our employees, both union and non-union. We anticipate as many, as many as 100 FTEs will actually remain at St. Vincent's to provide the ambulatory care services. And then for the approximately 641 FTEs, we have partnered with more than 30 Cleveland area institutions to host career opportunity events, and those have been going on. And I would say that they have been very gracious and good to our staff. And we know, this is a big change for the staff at St. Vincent's. Many of the staff at St. Vincent's have spent their entire career at St. Vincent's. And it's really the deep love of the Sisters and the environment that is there. And so we're proud of that and honor it, but we want to make sure that they get to a place where they have that same spirit of love and, you know, gratitude for their work. I'm just going to tell you the, to let you know of the list of, you know, individuals, communities that came here in terms of those looking for our employees for jobs. And they're, they're pretty remarkable if you really think about it. Avita Health, we had Catholic charities, we had the CDC, the Centers for Families and Children, Cleveland Clinic, the Cleveland Sight Center, the Cleveland Veterans Affair, the VA Hospital, Community Behavioral Health Center. We had Crystal Clinic, the Ortho Center, that actually is a very prominent orthopedic practice. Cuyahoga Metropolitan Housing, Dave &amp; Lucky's Market, Firelands Health, Life Care Centers of Westlake, Aliria, and Medina, Life Solutions South, Mercy Health, Mercy Medical, MGM Northfield Park, Mount Carmel Health System, North Coast Behavioral Health, and Omas, Pleasant View Care Center, Legacy Place in Parma, Regina Health Center, which is one of the ministries of the Sisters, Select Medical, Select Medical and Regency, the Sisters of Notre Dame, Southwest General Hospital, St. Augustine Manor, Suma, University Hospitals, the Village at Marymount and Wingspan. Again, I really want to share that the Sisters of Charity are devoted to Central, and we will always be, and to Cleveland, and to carry out our healing ministry. We have great plans for the future to supplement the ambulatory care, and we're going to talk about that tonight. I want to hear from you, what your concerns are, because we really do want to partner with our Councilman Starr and make sure that we have, you know, all the best services that we can for our community. We're hopeful for the future because we are also launching a new ministry that builds upon our extensive experience in addressing health and wellness, and that is the St. Vincent's Charity Health Campus. And that really will be at the heart of the campus. With your input, on an ongoing basis, we would like to transform the Sisters of Charity property on East 22nd, including the hospital's main campus, into a hub for health care, social services, empowerment to advance opportunities for the future. The idea is about making better use of our campus, which at its height, St. Vincent's had 492 beds in the height of its, you know, clinical practice at St. Vincent's. And unfortunately, that is significantly underutilized today, and it really, really started to, really, the census even began to drop further after COVID. So on September 15th, our census in the hospital was 39. And so you can imagine that that, and again, before COVID, the census was running about 100 to 120. And so in fact, it was substantially higher, but it just has never returned. This initiative has been in development for several years, and during which time we've conducted significant research, engaged the community in, I think, very robust dialogue to help inform the vision, and conducted outreach to potential partners and investors. St. Vincent's Charity Health Campus will also serve as a catalyst for revitalization in the neighborhood. As envisioned by our architectural partner, the health campus will offer an experience of radical welcome, and we will transform not only the hospital, but the surrounding property owned by the Sisters of Charity. We do indeed really thank you for your time and for your patience. And again, we know, it's not lost on us, that this is a very hard change. I can tell you that for the Sisters, this has been the hardest change that they've ever faced. And, and we're in it together, and we will continue to work together to make sure that we meet the needs of our community. Again, thank you for all attending. I really appreciate it. I think now I'm going to turn it back over. I think this is question and answer, so Councilman, I'll give you the microphone again and...
We don't tag team it.
I'll stay right here. I'll stay right here. Yes, sir.
Yes. So one of the things that we want to make sure residents are able to just ask those questions, because, you know, like I mentioned, it was a surprise to me as well when the announcement came out.
I know.
A lot of different thoughts, a lot of different emotions when you think about St. Vincent's St. Charity. Hospital emergency room, in most cases on the east side, that is either life or death situation when you're thinking about the location, how you could may have a victim who was shot, and the first thing they want to do is run themselves or get seen or get treatment at St. Vincent's Charity. Those effects are something that was first in my name. I mean, in my thoughts in my head when I first got the news. So how does that look for residents before we turn the floor over to residents to be able to ask questions?
Sure.
If you do have questions, please make a point, raise your hand, and we're going to get your question answered. Jessica, as well as Desmond, is going around with a microphone. But one thing that I definitely want to understand is, if something happens to me and, and, god forbid, or a victim has a gunshot wound, and they're probably on 79th, 93rd, you know, how does that happen? What effects does that happen for one? And then I think about, two, is the Skylines residents. Those residents usually walk across the street, not just to get medical treatment, they used to, they used to gift shop.
Yes.
To get gifts a lot, food options a lot. So how, what type of effect does that happen, have on residents? And then when you think about San Cofer Village residents, what effect does it have to be able to have that hospital there now? And then the changes that are going to occur, and how does that have that effect? I think that would be the first way we start, and then we could go to Q and A to everyone in the audience, just raise your hand if you have a question.
Sure. So just to go with the question about if somebody has a gunshot, if they have a heart attack, if they have some serious, you know, injury or illness, honestly, today, the EMS is not even bringing them to us. St. Vincent's is not a trauma center. So really, they have to go to Metro. Now, we're blessed. Metro is, you know, paramedics know exactly where to go, and they know what services the hospitals have, and they know, so they will know that when we transition from an emergency room to an urgent care, what can come there. And we'll make sure that everybody understands that, you know, if you have something serious, that you would really likely have to go to Metro, to UH, or the Cleveland Clinic. But that is a very valid, and again, we're blessed in Cleveland because we probably have the best health care anywhere in the country with those big health systems, and they are there to serve and take great care of our patients. I'm with you with food. I think that, you know, we recognized during COVID that our neighborhood couldn't come in the hospital, so they couldn't get food. And so literally, the Sisters and the staff there created Mission Kitchen, and we made food and took it out to people in need, and worked with CMHA to see where the need was. It's not enough, and that's part of the things that we're talking about in the health campus. We need a food, we need to answer the solution and have a solution for food for our neighborhood. So you're exactly right, and we see that as an important. Social determinant of health, you know, we can take care of, you know, your illness, but if you don't have any food, if you don't have the right kind of housing, you're not going to be healthy. So, you know, those are things that are a part, and we'll talk more about that as we, you know, talk about the health campus. Heather?
Yeah, I was just going to add that we are talking to a couple of different folks, Environmental Health Watch.
Do you want to come up here so they can hear you?
Sure, sure. Oh, I just want to...
I didn't know.
It's behind me, sir. We are talking to Environmental Health Watch, who's working with, coordinating a food co-op grocery store coalition about what we could do on the campus right now. We're also talking to a couple of other folks. And Matt, who's our current kitchen provider, is trying to figure out how we can keep Mission Kitchen going during this transition. So we are doing some outreach to see how we can continue. And Rashawn and I were just talking about, we'll try to do a focus group over at Skyline to make sure that we're hearing from, from the residents of Skyline and problem solving because their needs are important to us.
And just to piggyback back with that conversation with Skylines, we can get with Ms. Lewis. Jessica, can you make a point for us to scat up some communication so we can go into Skylines? Because I think about some of the primary residents that's right in walking distance and the usage that they have. But something that I also wanted to speak about, as we go forward and thinking about the health campus, when you think about the changes that's going to affect the community, the emergency unit, where that big old unit of the St. Vincent's Charity, is there any way to have some partnership conversation discussed with other health care providers, how they could possibly come in and mandate that section of the hospital? I think that can be some, some different services that can be provided, whether it's UH, Cleveland Clinic, whether it's the wonderful Metro campus as well, if that's something that they can do, not just, not the hospital, but more so the EMS part, because I know you have some services from the mental health that we're going to be taking care of. If there's a partnership for us to work on, that is something I would love to be involved for us to figure that out. Be like I said, because when things go on, even though it's not a trauma unit, the first thing a resident would think is get into St. Vincent's St. Charity. And I have lived experiences with residents as well as those close to me coming straight to St. Vincent's St. Charity. And then they were able to get some treatment, to be able to go to a Metro or to a UH or elsewhere to get the rest of the treatment that they may need. That's some of the things that are on my mind. But questions to the audience, any thoughts?
Yes. Yes. Joe, you need the mic. I'm sorry. I could go out, I could go out to you. I'll come to you.
You're good. Delores Craig, Precing Person of 5G, San Cofer. I lived in San Jose for 13 years, so I live in San Cofer, and I've been living in this community for a long time, and living around the community and the residents of seniors. Would you change? I get... I get that, but you know, a lot of seniors are used to St. Vincent. Even you got Metro, Cleveland Clinic, and UH, that is not in walking distance. They can just walk to you. When they get sick, when I lived in CMHA, see their building? When people got sick, they walked. I don't care if it was in the middle of the night. When they got sick, they walked, they didn't wait for EMS to come and get them. They walked, they left the building and walked, or sometimes they would get me, because I was LAC president, I would drive them. I came around here several times when I had got injured and came straight to you all. But the thing about it, I'm saying is, this is a, a community hospital, this is all they know. This is, this, this hospital belongs to this community, and people wants to keep this. And I understand the changes, changes come, time come, money changed, funding came, we get that. But mindset don't change. Mindset don't change. When people stuck on something, and you at the age of life, you can't get past it. I don't care what new comes to you, you can't get past the new, because you stuck to where you want to be. So my thing is this, with the hospitals, with all different hospitals and stuff, they can't get there. Transportation is devastating for some people. So my thing is this, how can we keep you? I'm a resident, I'm a resident of this community, I'm everybody's neighbor, I'm a senior.
Yes.
I can get around and do, do, but like Counselor said, you got to figure out a way to help people, because the mindset would not change because of the new. And so that's where you're going to have a problem with a lot of residents, they can't get past the new.
Understood.
Okay?
And it's very fair, and we need to, I thank you for letting us, you know, reading us about what the concerns, and we know, you know, and I will tell you, you know, our sisters, the sisters are going through, because they're, many of them have been through their whole life, they worked through their whole life. So, but what our commitment is, is that we will do everything we can, again, we know there's change, that yes, again, we know, we know, that if we would continue on the, you know, losing the financial, you know, wherewithal, we'll lose everything. And so we, we're not going to do that, but we do have a vision for the future, and I will tell you, there are things that we will be able to do to make a difference. And, and again, the biggest commitment is we're staying here. We are not leaving. We might be doing different services, because healthcare across the entire country is changing. It's going to change. So, but we want to, again, continue to carry out the healing ministry of Christ, and we love our neighbors, we love them. I mean, they're, it's part of our life, so, and that of the Sisters, so you have our commitment that will continue. And I think, you know, we really realized, and I have to apologize to Councilman Starr, you know, the communication was a little bumpy, and, and that's, I take full responsibility for that, and I apologize, and I will tell you, we will do a better job. It's sometimes, you know, you think you've got the best plans, and then things, you know, just go sideways, and that's no excuse. I think the bigger thing is, is that by meeting like this, on some regular basis, where we can, again, see what's on your mind, what's working, what's not, it'll save a lot of that heartache. Because we're, we are here every day because we love you, we love the community, and we want to do our best work.
I am a Promise Ambassador.
Yes.
Been one of the first 15 when it started years ago, so I will be on that team with Rashawn, working in the community, because, because I am part of the community. Okay? Just want to say that.
Thank you.
I know you're going to continue with your mental health. I know when the police bring, have a mental health issue, they bring a lot of the patients to you. Would that continue? And secondly, with that, so many issues in the community, is there a way to expand that part of that mission, as far as mental health, when it comes to so many issues around mental health? Maybe, is there a way you could expand on that, because?
Sure. So I'm going to let Dr. Garvin talk a little bit, but, you know, again, the Sisters are totally committed, and will always be, to behavioral health, to Rosary Hall, you know, and those are important services. There's other work going on about crisis stabilization, and looking at how patients can be seen, and again, avoid a hospitalization, but get them help. And so we are totally committed to it. I'm going to let Chuck just talk a little bit about our behavioral health, but those are critically important.
For the police, that's what...
Yes, yes.
And I feel up to that part before, because I work for them, and it needs to be expanded, because there's so many, they're ready to expand that.
Yes.
So I'm going to answer your question the best I can. I'm going to take 30 seconds to tell you about, I, I have only been on this team for relatively short time, only about a year, but I'm going to tell you real quick about my own attachments to St. Vincent's Charity. My own grandfather has been gone 60 years, but he had his life saved at Rosary Hall, and by Sister Gnausen. My father-in-law had his life saved in the heart operating room at St. Vincent's Charity. My mom was a nurse here for 25, almost 30 years. My younger brother worked in, in central supply in this hospital. My own father was in this hospital. I, when I went to medical school, was, a lot of things were different 35, 40 years ago. I spent time at St. Vincent's Charity when I was in medical school, when it was still a place with enormous amount of activity, trauma, gunshot wounds, heart surgeries, strokes, all that. And, you know, I, I, I think that what's going on, the transition of the hospital are absolutely, positively the right things to do right now, but this is, is, is hard for me, too. I'm very, very grateful to what's happened at St. Vincent's Charity over these years. So what will stay? I'm just going to, just in the behavioral health part of things, what will remain after November 15th? One is, we already have a center for sort of outpatient psychiatry, outpatient therapy work, that will continue, and we only expect to grow that. Rosary Hall, the out, the intensive outpatient treatment for addiction, we plan to continue and to grow that as well. St. Vincent Charity has a commitment to the, to the crisis services that are happening in the, in the psychiatric emergency department, and remain committed to that. And luckily, that's, that's going on for decades, and luckily, we've, we've had a very great partner funding that, the Adams Board, and I know that the Adams Board also has a commitment to provide those, those services for folks. So those things are all going to continue in behavioral health. And then on top of that, we are on our way to expanded services that are sort of in that space, after you get out of the emergency department, the psychiatric emergency department, or after you get out of the psychiatric hospital, there can be a space, or a, a, a time when you need, don't need to be in the hospital, don't need to be in the emergency department, but you need some more intense care and help than just showing up to see the therapist, you know, every week or two, or the psychiatrist. And we are working on a program to help folks regain stability in their lives and recover from those acute things, again, to keep them out of the hospital. So we really do plan, it's our intention to expand behavioral health services, not, not really contract them.
And I might just add to that, and I'll grab that, Jan.
Yes.
You know, I know the Adams Board is here with Scott and Maggie, but, you know, recovery for mental health is a long-term illness, and we recognize that we have to put the supports long-term to support our community. And really, the, the crisis that, crisis services that Chuck outlined, we want to expand that to really support long-term recovery. We have a gentleman by the name of Dr. Michael Biscaro, who worked at the VA, and anybody who knows the VA, it's actually one of the nationally renowned places for mental health long-term supports, including both behavioral health supports, both mental health and addiction. We really want to expand services, and I know Rashawn could talk about all the conversations we've had in community around trauma, around grief, around depression and anxiety, and then going up the spectrum to serious mental illness. And we know that we have to do something different, we have to do something longer, and we can't, we have to treat it as every other chronic illness. So I'm with you 100%, and believe me, that's our goal, and we have the experts in the room who probably could talk more about what is needed for this community, so just wanted to add that piece.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, sure. No, no. We'll come to you.
You got the skis, right?
This is just a suggestion, one thing, I don't want to get lost in this, is we all have a story. Maybe in that space, we can have some type of dedication. I met Dr. Joy Marshall. So we all have a story about St. Vincent. So maybe we should have a space there to make sure we don't lose the history of what St. Vincent's been to us, even if it's some type of documentary, so our future can know, and we never lose sight.
Well, obviously, you've been to St. Vincent's, right? In the hall, and if you walk up that hallway, you have the history of the Sisters, and you really see how every decade, or, you know, they changed, they, new needs came up. So we will do that. I think it'll be a beautiful way for us to remember and celebrate all the loving care that everyone that was at St. Vincent's provided, and we will do that, that's excellent. Yes, oh, sorry.
Hello, how are you?
How are you?
I'm okay.
Hi.
My name is Alkeeta Ferguson. I am a CMHA resident, and I'm also a Central Promise Ambassador leader. Two questions. One is, just a little curious how we got to this conclusion, and two, for the employees who do, will be out of a job, are you helping them transition to other employment?
So, great question.
So, your first question, I want to make sure I give it to you right. Your first question, just repeat it, so I can repeat it for them.
How did we get to the conclusion of...
What, how we got here?
Of changing, transitioning to urgent, emergency department.
Care. So as soon as we made the decision that we could no longer do inpatient care, so our patients stay overnight, that's most acute care hospitals, patients stay overnight, they stay for days to get their care. When we transition away from inpatient and just do ambulatory, you really cannot call yourself an emergency department by CMS standards. So then you are now an urgent care center, and you take care of a lower acuity, again, they're not as serious illnesses, it doesn't mean we're minimizing it, but that is exactly how that decision got made, and it really relates to the inpatient beds. Your second question is our employees, and I have to tell you that we really felt very blessed, especially with, you know, people were calling us, and we had a special partnership with UH. At university hospitals, Cliff Majarian is the CEO, and I called him to talk about the change, and he said, Jan, we will take care of your employees, we will do everything we can to make sure that they have, you know, good benefits, good salary, and they're going to do everything they can to welcome them into UH. And they were with us for a week, they came every day, and they did help the employees. You know, many haven't, haven't done an interview in 30 years, so they helped them interview, they helped them do their resume, and they were very kind. And I would have to say, all the agencies, the list, the names that I read, they, they were really, really so kind and good to our employees. And, and I, I feel very blessed, because those employees are amazing, and they're going to get very wonderful caregivers. Okay? Thank you, yes.
Rashawn. Rashawn, my...
So first I want to say thank you to all of the Promise Ambassadors, right, for coming out and being true to the mission of leading the change that you wish to see in the community. So thank you for your presence, thank you for your voice, thank you for your advocacy, and thanks for being family, right? Because we're family. And what I don't want to lose here, because there's been so much conversation and great feedback, all the voice that's in the space of questions. You have questions, but you also have ideas and visions that you want to see extended through how care is provided in the neighborhood, right? So I want to make sure that we have everyone's contact information, so when we have these ongoing conversations, you will be included, we won't miscommunicate, and then you can extend the invitation to others who also have voice, who also have insight, for us to co-create what this looks like moving forward. Because again, this is not just something that is drop-in, right? This is something that affects us all, and we all have needs, desires, wants, hopes, wishes, and dreams that we want to see come to fruition, not just for ourselves, but our families, and the legacy of families in the central community. So please, I'm going to make sure that I connect with individuals in the room, so we can get email addresses, contact information, so when those opportunities are here and given, everyone's voices in the room.
Any other questions? Any other thoughts? Yes.
So Rashawn's comment there reminds me that among the, among the outpatient services that we have every intention of providing, this, this part won't happen on November 15th, but we're on a campus that hasn't taken care of children, I don't know when we took care of children last. I, I have no, it's beyond my memory when we last took care of children. Jan talked about how, how much everywhere, things that used to happen in the hospital now happen outpatient. We haven't had inpatient or outpatient for young families and, and children. And we have every intention of, of providing the health and medical care that whole families can, can use. And as we, as we grow that, the intention is not to build something and then expect folks to show up. We really do want to hear from folks in the neighborhood, the best way to do this. So we have, we have a commitment to expand our outpatient care, we will become more than ever, not less, and not only will we do more, we'll do it with more folks who need it, particularly young families and, and kids. And we will need your help in hearing how to do that best, not something that doctors should just figure out all on their own, so.
Thanks, Chuck. I have one question. Going forward, what is a communication plan to the businesses, the residents, that outlines who the new contact would be, since you have this exodus of staff and personnel from the medical center? I'm just wanting to make sure that it's just not a press release, it's not just going to be in a plain dealer, but something that's going to people's homes, that they will actually see, to know, because everybody's not paying attention. But I just want to make sure that you're very purposeful in making sure that people know who to talk to next, who is my contact. Thank you.
No, no, that's outstanding, and, and we definitely know that we have to have that, and we have, we're going to have to do it in multiple levels of communication, because that's going to be a big change. So we have our communication people are in here right now, and we know, so Elizabeth, that's a very, very important aspect of the change, so we will make sure that we take care of that. Go ahead, Rashawn.
And also, I think Jan may have alluded to this a little bit, but...
Communication is ongoing, and it's an iterative process. So in acknowledgement of that, we would like to host monthly sessions, ongoing sessions. But to your point, Lisa Neta, like, how do we get the information out there? So I'm going to put on my promise hat to say, I'm going to need some help, right? We're going to need some help. And once those flyers, materials, opportunities are created, we're going to need some help in distributing, like making sure...
Get it out to everybody.
The grocery stores, or excuse me, the corner stores have the information, making sure we're partnered with the LACs to get the information out, to individual, the homeowners, Burton Bell car, to making sure people are getting the information and knowing where to be present, when to be present, and how to be present. And if they can't be physically in the space, what's another opportunity they can provide feedback in? Because some people can't get out, right? And understanding that we may have to go to where community members are. And that was another point I wanted to lift it up about behavioral health, understanding that...
understanding that some people are at home, right? And some people may not feel comfortable coming to access and say, you know what, I have a need. So having ambassadors, not Promise ambassadors, but someone who just champions behavioral health and understands the community, out in the community, being in spaces, having real dialogue to say, hey, you have a need, let's co-create a solution that's meaningful for you and your family. So again, leaning on our family to support the communication effort, but hosting very intentional, regular, monthly meetings to make sure that the communication process isn't just one-sided, but there's a two-way street.
Any other questions? I think we got everybody, I don't think I missed anyone. I'll step aside.
Those are, those have been some great questions so far. But with the communications team that I would love to see for us to do is put together collective unit, compare contrast of what the services are going to be, what they were before, and what they are going forward, so we can get that out. I am a big advocate with lit dropping, door knocking, book club, block club, meetings. We want to make sure it's a, a strong push for people not to be able to say they didn't receive it meaning. Making sure it hit their doorstep, not just their doorstep, but their hands. Rather we're using technology as well. But the number one marketing tool in this city, in this country, is still word of mouth and relationships. So I want to make sure we have that fact sheet on the communication. We can make sure we get that together. Jessica going to make sure she send out communication so we can get that. But we want that literature to have, you know, this is what the services we're still going to have, offer. How do you get it? What number to call, who to email, who, everything to make sure people have all those services. So I'm going to look forward to work with you on that as well. And then also, I just want to say thank you, everyone, for coming out. Because this is, this is not no one conversation for us to do this. We have a lot of work to do, not just here on East 22nd, but throughout Ward 5. St. Vincent Charity has been home for residents in central neighborhood for medical services since the 1800s. That is not something that's going to change, but some things and the services are going to change. But we need to make sure that we continue to work together to figure out solutions. Because like some of the people said in the audience, this is where people go. And this is where people call home. And now that that is changing, we need to make sure we connect them with the services and also figuring out how we can work and come, work with other medical field healthcare services, such as CareSource or CareAlliance, to make sure they have the tools that they need because some of the services are. And I know I mentioned earlier that we do have other healthcare facilities in northeast Ohio. How can they play a role in this change? The making sure employees have actual jobs. I know Metro Health have been on campus the last two and a half weeks, making sure those employees getting opportunity to get a job. But want to make sure it's competitive. You know, one of the things is, if I worked there at St. Vincent St. Charity for, for 20 years, I don't want to go to Metro and I'm starting off at, at that first rate. I would still want to be treated as a 20-year employee with the experience and have a competitive pay because things change, and I don't want it to change as far as their pay. So I want to make sure we work closely. I know Michelle Pomerant is here from Metro. I've been in communication with all healthcare facilities just to make sure we work together. Like, this is, this adjustment has a drastic impact on, on the city of Cleveland, but most importantly, on the stakeholders in, in Ward 5, such as the central neighborhood. And I just want to stand side by side with you, working to make sure we can communicate everything more effectively. Like you mentioned, it was, it was surprising for me, it was surprising for residents, but this is not the end. This is the conversation of more, more, more work to be done. And, and as I'm looking around the room, any other question, please? If there's a thought, there's no such thing as a wrong question. This is time for us to get clarification and understanding. Desmond, we have one right here.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Terry Weltenking. I, I live in Ward 5. I've been living here about three years in a building called Prospect Yard. And this building is supposed to be affordable housing, low income. I'm sorry. It's supposed to be affordable housing and for low-income residents. But in the past three years, we went through the pandemic, and now all of a sudden, people's winces are being raised.
One second, before we get into that conversation, we want to stay on focus with the St. Vincent Charity. And then afterwards, we could talk more in depth, one-on-one, or with me or someone on my staff to address those type of issues. We want to make sure all the questions about St. Vincent St. Charity, pros, cons, solutions, how we can work together. But if you, if you want to keep on, on that, St. Vincent Charity, please.
Okay, St. Vincent Charity, I don't know what the topic of discussion was tonight, I'm sorry. So St. Vincent Charity, I have to read more into what's going on around here with St. Vincent Charity. But my topic of discussion is around HUD and the accountability of cities.
Yep, and, and, and also, like that HUD conversation, we could definitely could talk. Once we finish this meeting, man, you can sit down and have some discussion, dialogue on what we could do, rather there's some concerns and how we can work together, definitely, respectfully, yep.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ashley Kennedy from college now greater Cleveland. I wanted to know if there has been specific communication within the CMSD working with the district? So the, the different schools within the neighborhood know exactly what's going on. I know that there are parent ambassadors that are in the neighborhood. And so I wanted to know, are they receiving communication? Is there a way that we can work with that? I, I talked with the parent ambassador, so I'm willing to help with that as well. But I didn't know on a, a district level how that goes.
Yes, that's my question, and I think Rashawn?
So, Ashley, great question. I know Marion Sterling, and we, we've been talking about it a little bit with Marion Sterling. But I do think there's some intentional work that we can do around that. And even if it starts with the Say Yes coordinators and the parent ambassadors, and just helping them understand the services, again, to Councilwoman Starr's point, that fact sheet. But then, again, the next step, where do we go from here? Including them more intentionally around the co-creation of what's next, or voicing their opinions and concerns again about what's next. So I would love to have a deeper conversation on how we can do that. I do think that we can do some top-down information with Sharon Front, with CEO Gordon and their team, but really some true work around the people who touch our families. Say Yes coordinators, the principals, and the parent ambassadors. So maybe you and I could work together on that. And I'm looking at Lisa Neta, because we like tag team, and Marion Sterling. But just thinking about how we could be more purposeful around communicating that better.
Well, first, if I see, I don't see no more hands, no more questions. I would like to say thank you all for coming out to our town hall meeting to have a discussion with St. Vincent Charity regarding some of the changes that are coming to Ward 5 and figuring out how we can make a positive out of this, out of these news that's going on with the downsides that have St. Vincent Charity. I'm Councilman Richard Starr, thank you all. Have a good evening, please grab something to eat out of the way out. Thank you.